To this answer on online consultation event. This event, evening's event is being held to report back details of the public consultation on the local area community plan for Central Lack. It gives you as residents an opportunity to consider those initial findings, test their validity and identify any gaps. This event is being held online because of the ongoing situation with Covid. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. I will hand over to my colleague from Democratic Services to set out the details.
Thank you Chair. The event is being conducted using Zoom as a virtual platform and will be live streamed for the public to view via the council's Public Eye webcast inside. This will mean that the recording will also be available. You should be aware that the authority is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during the webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's data retention policy. Therefore, by entering the virtual meeting room, you are consenting to being filmed and the use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Sorry about that Ron. Thank you Chair. The event is being conducted using Zoom as a virtual platform and will be live streamed for the public to view via the council's Public Eye webcast inside. This will mean that the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. You should be aware that the authority is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collector during the webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's data retention policy. Therefore, by entering the virtual meeting room, you are consenting to being filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. If members of the public do not wish to have their image captured, they should turn their camera off. Alternatively, you can leave the virtual meeting room and watch the live webcast from the council's meeting webpages. We have a high number of attendees tonight, so to help the meeting run as smoothly as possible, it is important that all participants in the virtual meeting room have their microphone on mute for the duration of the meeting. At the appropriate part of the meeting, you will be able to indicate the wish to speak by using the raise hand function. The chair will let you know when this is. Please only unmute when the chair invites you to speak. This will help reduce the scope for noise interference. To assist with smooth flow of the meeting, the chat facility is not available. May I also suggest that all mobile phones and similar devices are switched to silent in order to remove the potential for disturbance when speaking at the meeting. Also, please ensure that you have an appropriate background. One final thing to mention, a live transcript of the meeting is available by clicking on the live captioning button on your toolbar. Thanks in advance for your cooperation in this. Thanks Chair.
Thank you Jay. We have a running order for the meeting, but before we continue, I will explain how the meeting will work. I understand there's an agenda going to be coming up on the screen. I will shortly ask the councillors in the Central Lack and the officers to introduce themselves. We will then have a presentation from our area manager Adele to report back on the initial findings from the public consultation on our community plan. After this, we will break into groups to discuss the different themes that have arisen. I will explain how these breakout groups work when we get to that point. After the breakout rooms event, we will receive an overview of the main discussion points from each group. After this meeting, we will collate all the detailed input we've had and these will inform the final version of the plan. There will be an opportunity for public questions. I will explain how that works when we get there. Finally, I will sum up and outline the next steps. Can I now ask the councillors and officers please introduce themselves? George?
Hello Chair, I'm George Nelson Hammond, I'm one of the health councillors. Hi.
Hi. Brian?
Brian? Hi there. Hello, I'm Brian Homshaw, councillor for Broomhill and Sharrow Vale.
Thank you. Cal Two?
Hello, I'm Carlton Rivers, councillor for Broomhill and Sharrow Vale.
Thank you. Martin Phipps?
Hi, I'm Martin, I'm a councillor for City Ward.
Josie?
Evening everybody, I'm councillor Josie Pashak Hillsborough Ward.
Christine? Christine?
Sorry, didn't unmute. Hello, I'm Christine Gilligan, councillor from Hillsborough Ward.
Hello, thank you for being here. Douglas?
Hello, yes Douglas Johnson, I'm a councillor for City Ward along with Martin and Ruth Mercer.
Thank you. Ruth?
Hi, I'm Ruth Mercer, one of the councillors for City Ward.
Angela?
Hi everybody, I'm councillor Ardencia for Broomhill and Sharrow Vale.
Neil?
Evening, my name's Neil Gibson, councillor for Walkley and I apologise, I'm either the wrong way round and my background's the wrong way round.
Okay, well now I'll go to the officers. Andy?
Hi, Andy Phillips, Service Manager for Parks and Public Realm.
Okay. Lorraine?
Hi, I'm Lorraine Wood, Head of Service for Communities.
Adele?
Evening everyone, Adele's the man, Community Services Manager.
Nessa?
Hi, my name is Nessa, I'm the Community Services Officer for the Central Local Area Committees.
Ella?
Hi everyone, I'm Ellen Moncombe, the Project Support Officer for the Central Lack.
Thank you everybody. I'll now hand over to Adele, our area manager, to give a short presentation.
Thank you Chair. Ella, if you can bring the slide up. Firstly, can I apologise to everybody for the technical issues at the start of this session? So good evening everyone, thank you all for attending today's Central Local Area Committee public meeting. I will keep this quite brief, I know that you'll all be wanting to get into the breakout sessions. So through the course of this presentation, I will give you an overview of the findings following our recent consultation events and survey analysis. Next slide please. Yep, so in terms of the Central Local Area Committee, this covers four wards. And the four wards are Broomhill and Sharrow Vale, City, Hillsborough and Walkley. So who are the committee? The Local Area Committee consists of 12 elected members made up from the four wards, so that's three from each ward. The Lack Chair is councillor Bernard Little, the Vice Chair is councillor Josie Pashak. In terms of the Lack team, we're made up in terms of a Community Services Manager, Community Services Officers, Project Support and also various supporting staff from across the local authority. More information can be found on the Central Act website and of course after this session, we will share details of how you can get further involved. Next slide please. Yeah, so in regards to our engagement activities, our online and paper surveys opened at the end of August through till the end of October. We requested expression of interest from community groups to ensure that we reach out to as many people as possible using various different communication methods. I've just listed a couple of the groups that we've worked alongside. So we've worked alongside Zest, the Burton Street Foundation, Sedaka, Unity Gym and the South Yorkshire Mixed Martial Arts Academy. You'll know from some of the groups that we've tried to reach out to a younger demographic of people to ensure that we can capture as much voices as possible. In terms of public consultation, we've held five face-to-face public consultations, at least one per each ward. These took place in local shopping centres or supermarkets and of course this is something that we will continue to do over the course of throughout the local area committees across all the seven different areas. Next slide please. I think we've had some poor internet connection. Apologies everyone, I'll just try and bring. Sorry, apologies, some technical issues, we're based in the town hall, so I'm just gonna try and bring my presentation up. Is that now up on screen?
Hello everyone, apologies for that, I'm just gonna bring the the presentation back up again, having some technical issues. Here we go.
Apologies everyone, technical issue seems to be a running theme for today's presentation and session. So yeah, in terms of our engagement activities, we held events across all four wards. These are just a sample of pictures in terms of what the team conducted. We were out in Morrison's in Hillsborough, the supermarkets in Walkley and also we held an engagement event at the mall markets as well. It really did highlight how passionate local people were to contribute to positive changes in their areas, but it also highlighted the reality of how hard the local authority and partners need to do to build trust in communities. Next slide please. Yeah, in terms of the surveys, we had over 900 responses and that was made up of over 600 online responses and just shy of 300 paper responses. There's percentages on there in terms of which wards the respondents lived. Hillsborough was the highest, so over 40% of people responded from Hillsborough, closely followed by Walkley. This slide tells us about the demographics of the respondents to the survey. I won't go through all of this, but some key areas we have identified to do further engagement work are the younger demographics in terms of 16 to 18 year olds carers and those who have long-term health issues or disabilities and also more work with ethnic minority groups. And this could be in different forms and communications to ensure we reach out to a wider demographic as possible. One of the questions that we asked local people was around how happy people were living in the area. The vast majority of people sharing that they were happy or very happy, over 60% of people shared that they were happy. We've also got some work to do to ensure that we reach out in terms of making sure that people have a fair opportunity of sharing their thoughts. Next slide please. We also asked a question to people in regards to how easy it is to find out about news in their local area. Slightly more concerning on this slide that only 9%, only 4% of individuals shared that it were very, sorry, only 9% of people shared that it was very hard to get in touch with the local authority. Next slide please. These are just some comments in regards to what respondents said. So what people said in terms of likes across the Central Lack was in regards to being close to local amenities, the sense of community. And people, quite a lot of people spoke about the park and access to green spaces. In terms of improvements, people talked about littering and fly tipping, more activities for young people and also road safety was another area of discussion. In terms of likes, as part of the survey, people were asked to tell us three things that they liked about the area that they lived. On each graph, we've ordered them to show the highest number first, so over 75% of people shared they liked their community and neighbourhoods. This is a similar sort of pattern across most lack but also in regards to the national average, 80% of people nationally shared that they liked the communities where they currently reside. And people also talked about the fact that they liked the parks and open spaces across Central, which is evidence that we have fantastic green spaces such as the Botanical Gardens, the Pond de Rosa and Hillsborough Park. Next slide please. This slide, we asked respondents to tell us about the three improvements they would like to see in their area. This information helped us identify what we feel are the key themes. As you can see, transport and highways was the highest with nearly 700 respondents sharing they would like to see improvements, followed by environment. The top three areas under transport were around parking, traffic flow and public transport. For environment, people shared they would like to see improvements around street scene, waste and rubbish and environmental cleaning. We will go into more detail in the breakout room shortly. Next slide please. The five priority themes that emerged as part of the Lack surveys were transport and highways, environment, communities and neighbourhoods, community safety in crime and business employment and skills. You'll shortly be put into these themes following your preferences to share your views on how you can be part of the solutions, but also how collectively we can address these improvements. Seems to be addressed, so one of the themes that came out in terms of a trend that was under representation, so some neighbourhoods and groups of people are significantly unrepresented. For example, young Sheffielders, those who don't own their own home and the seldom heard groups. It's important that we have to do things differently to capture a wider voice and that will inform our future planning. Next slide please. And finally, what's next? So following today's session, we will continue the production and to start the implementation process of the Central Act Community Plan. We will hold four public meetings per year and provide an update in terms of the progress of the plan and how this will be developed. Our next meeting will take place in March in which we will finalize and agree the community plan. We will continue to hold issue meetings on topics of local interest where and when these are appropriate in communities across all four wards. We will of course continue to engage and consult with communities to review the priorities for the area and we will be providing an annual report to full council each year. And of course, we will represent the interests of the communities with the council and with other public bodies and private organisations. Thank you, I'll hand back over to the Chair.
There's a question from Jerry Perkins. Perkins, could we hear the question please?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, marvellous. It's just that on the access, it says how easy it was to access. I think there's about a missing 30% in those numbers. Looks as though it might need reworking.
Thank you very much. Pass that through.
Yeah, thank you Chair. In regards to the information, 30% of respondents didn't respond to that question. So out of the total figure, there were the actual percentage of people who responded. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to one of the five breakout rooms for 45 minutes. Everyone here has been pre-allocated to a breakout room based on the preferences they indicated when they registered. The elected member designated as a Chair for each of the rooms will help lead and manage discussions and alongside a note taker. We're very keen to hear contributions from as many people as possible in the breakout groups. Please try not to dominate the discussion. It may help if you jot your idea on a paper before speaking. These we would like to consider. One, what actions would you like to see address these issues? Two, how would you like to be involved in the solutions? Three, what do you think are the top three key priorities the Local Area Committee needs to focus on based on discussion for this theme? These sessions will run for 45 minutes. Please do not leave the breakout room until the host brings you back into the main meeting. I will now ask the host to set up the rooms. This may take a few minutes, so please can I ask for your patience to give us a little time to make these arrangements? Thank you.
You're right, Steve. You're right, Steve. Wow. Okay.
Hello. Good to see everybody back. I understand that in the breakout rooms, not everybody had a chance to speak. And I suppose there is such a lot to say. But I'd like to remind you that if you contact this email address, you can send your message, your question as well, and we can answer that. That's that's central lack. That's C E N T R A L L A C at Sheffield.gov.uk. So please send your questions in. I know we have got people here who are actually recording, who has spoken. And if there's a question that comes up, we will answer it. So just to move on, I'd like the facilitators to give concise feedback from the breakout rooms. So if you're ready, no more than two minutes each, I'll start, I'll just read them out. So could I ask the Chair of the Group on Community and Neighbourhoods, George Lindas-Hammond, please, to report back?
Thanks, Chair, we're going to miss loads of stuff because we had such an untested discussion. But I'd say really, we focused around three sort of major themes that went across the questions. I think first talked about, and I'm pretty sure the environment may also cover this, about the impact of litter and messing things in our area and how we can, you know, and how that actually is a common theme across diverse communities across central. And we've a lot of, a lot of good discussion about how we can support litter picking groups better, how we can, how we can get communities more involved in that. And also how we can ensure that our communities stay clean by making sure that the bins, you know, actually do get collected and also is it a priority to have more of them in local areas? And then we also talked a bit about, we talked a bit about students and how, you know, there's really good seeing the amount of people involved in proactive engagement with students. And there was a request, could the lack be involved with engaging universities to make sure the universities are doing what they should be doing in ensuring students are really good members of the community? And then that led on to a really fruitful discussion about some of the solutions around community spaces. And we've got really good community spaces across the area, but we need to be supporting them and actually not supporting them to be used and supporting them to be, and supporting them in all sorts of ways. And then, and then a really good thing like networking and how we need to be, those that are making difference in our neighbourhoods, we need to be supporting them better. And how can we link using the local area committee also to talk to each other and share what they're doing? And are there ways that local committee can really share what they're doing? So I think in two minutes, that's about as good a coverage as we're going to get. But there's so many other things that will be captured, that are captured in the really helpful form mode. It will go forward. Thanks.
Thank you for being so brief, George. So I'd like to go to community safety and crime with Caltoon, please.
I'm actually gonna nick it from Caltoon, if that's alright.
Thanks, Martin.
So yeah, the three main themes coming out of our discussion was the need for more and more in-depth consultation on a local level and ongoing conversation and consultation. So this isn't just a one-off, but the need to keep going and make sure it's more representative, reaching out to groups that might not otherwise fill it in. So not around like hard-to-reach groups, but the services not reaching correctly or well enough. Because that's kind of what we've seen is that it's disproportionate, their feedback. So for example, we've got 94% response rate from white ethnicity and only 6% from black Asian ethnic minority, which isn't representative of the central act. So need for more consultation there, definitely. And then kind of we talked around kind of joined up thinking. So when we take solutions in one area, making sure it's not just displacing issues to other areas. So big pushes in the city to engage with homeless people, low-level drug users and involving kind of them just being pushed to different areas, need to have joined up thinking around that. So you don't just displace issues. And lighting and clear sighting was another one of the key issues that came up. So there's clear sight in parks and green spaces, so people feel safe.
Thank you very much, Martin. Can we now go to environment? Josie, can you report back, please?
Yes, just to start off though, can I just say, because it was such a big group, I did feel that people were rushed and we weren't able to give people time. And it's not that people were long or extended in the responses, it's just that because there were so many in there, it was very difficult for people to get the points across. And it is important, it is a massive issue. And, and I think, I want to stress that above everything else, that it's important that people understand that it is being taken very seriously and we need to feed back on that. The main issue, as with the bar chart really, was environmental maintenance and cleaning, waste, rubbish, and again, the outcomes of that sort of vermin and rats and things like that are the sort of main issues from cleanliness. The climate is the clean air, carbon footprint, the impact of traffic on the neighbourhoods. And, and that goes in with the noise pollution. But we also have got, again, it's particularly to the student areas, which is not all, all of the areas within the lack. But it's about building up communication and community spirit with the student areas. So it's how getting them to engage and keep the area clean, getting them to understand the impact they have on the communities around them. And so rather than, I think, trying to legislate, it's building those links, which has been difficult through Covid. But I think, given the number of them and the impact that they have on the community, it came across very strongly in our group that people felt about that. And again, one of the biggest thing is, although it's a sort of a fourth, is transport and speeding. And sometimes it's a good idea to block roads off because it stops areas being a rat run. But then on the other side, on the other side of that, other people are more greatly impacted because then you force more traffic onto other roads. So it is about having a look at one decision in one area impacts on another road in another area. And really, I think my group could probably have done with double the time that we've got because it is such a massive issue. And again, it's making sure pocket parks and open green areas are kept for the community as well.
Thank you, thank you, Josie. The next is transport and highways, report back with Douglas.
Thanks, Bernard. So we had a few things, smallish group. Safeguarding was an interesting issue that came up and just reinforcing the idea that public transport's essentially got to be safe. So in particular, looking at the environment of lighting and safety around bus stops and in residential areas. Really interesting because it just reinforces, you know, how important that is. Interesting point that came up, that buses have CCTV both inside and outside the buses. So actually, that means that the more buses are on the routes, the more CCC TV, CCC CCTV coverage there is, more coverage there is, which can add to community safety. And it's possibly something that's not used enough where there are street incidents on the street, not on buses. And that led on to the need for, you know, good reliable public transport. I mean, it's surely something we all want. Question is how to get there. But certainly the, you know, clear commitment coming from our group that that was what was needed. Question came up about whether taxis should be able to use bus lanes. At present, they can, but whether that should be the case and whether that should also be the case for taxis that are not registered and licensed in Sheffield. Yeah, those out-of-town taxis where as a council, we don't have so much control over their behaviour. Bit of an issue about, you know, the way that taxis behave now, the difficulty about getting taxis and the impact on beef with disabilities, especially those with severe disabilities who, you know, find it almost impossible to use buses. So that came up, road safety was a theme there and the issue with speeding. So we've got an action point there, we're going to take back some action on speeding near Marlcliffe School. That's been picked up as something that's not been actioned for a bit. We're going to tell them that we're going to invite the local police team who can do a speeding survey there and to act as a deterrent and see if we can pick up some information there. And that could of course lead on to the possibility for, you know, road measures there. But first thing is to get the police on that, remembering that speeding is something that the police enforce. A bit of discussion about enforcement of all these traffic and transport infringements and the fact that there are some pretty dangerous drivers out there that cause a massive risk to the, you know, the vast majority of people who are not doing that. And then finally, a bit of feedback on just deals, attempts to report things to the council. But yeah, we'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. The next is business, employment and skills, report back from Angela.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, we had a tiny group of people, but very good ones. And so we just tried to make sense of, of the, you know, what we had in front of us, really. And one of the observations was that, although it was about business, and local businesses are not being consulted and not being surveyed about what their needs are. And so I think that was a really fair point because the, the whole four wards have got some amazing shopping centres and, you know, shopping districts with a lot of independent shops. And so it would be interesting, it would have been interesting to also have that perspective as well as the residents' perspective in terms of what is needed to improve. We talked about skilling up people and so scaling up people for jobs of the future. But we also touched on maybe mapping out what skills we need and how many of each we need. And looking at what students are doing, when they graduate, how long they stay for and what jobs they have. And if they leave, why they leave, do they leave because they can't find the jobs? You know, that they feel they need to be paid for, you know, to set up a family or whatever. That, that is the feeling. And also, we talked about employability. And also, we talked about communication and about how much happens in Sheffield in terms of support for businesses, support for people in terms of job fairs, et cetera. But not people not necessarily knowing about it. And, and just enhancing in general, the, you know, the fact that, I think our locality is the one with the, you know, is, is like a good melting pot of lots of different ages, cultures, skills, you know, from the lowest to the highest, we've got the hospital, the universities. So we, you know, we have the whole range, if you want, here. And call like Sheffield condensed in one area, really. So yeah, that's more or less all we talked about.
Thank you, Angela. So we've set aside 50 minutes for public questions. We've received no questions in advance. For people here, I will invite the questioners to address the committee with their questions in turn. Can we go ahead with that, please?
If we'd had a chat function, we might have got some questions.
Well, we, we have, well, later on, you can actually send those questions in. So I'll continue. So after these questions, we'll have other questions from the other people in the room. And could you raise your hand? The hand function to indicate that you have a question. So when you ask a question and mute yourself and then mute again once you've done, so we could, at that point, please lower your hand. When you asked your question, can you please clearly state your name and which area of this, of the lack area you are from? If we cannot address the answer question, we'll provide a written response using the contact me email, which I provided earlier on, that's Sheffield Central Lack, Central Lack, L A C. If you can run, if we run out of time, you can email us. So can we proceed to the questions, please? So please raise your, your hand. I've got Karina. And then Sean. Karina?
Just a very brief question, and maybe if I read a bit more thoroughly, I'd know the answer already. But what force and what is the level of forcibility that, that pertains or attaches to a local, to a community plan, to a lack plan, which is what we're working towards? You know, what is its force?
So, so what powers do we have, you saying that?
Yeah.
Adele, can you ask and answer that?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Karina, for, for the question. And this is something that we are currently working on in terms of looking at what powers can be devolved as part of the local area committee. We've got the £100,000, which we currently have as part of the four wards. But as part of the, the sessions and the community plan, we will be working with partners and internal services to look at what budgets and powers can be devolved. Currently, we haven't got a set of, a set criteria. But this is something that we will look and explore as, as we go on through the progression of these committees. Thank you. Thank you.
So next is Sean. Thank you, Karina. Next is Sean.
Hi, everyone. Yep, I'm Sean Bynon. I'm in the Walkley area. And I've got a couple of questions around the engagement. How do you propose to hear from more voices that have so far not been engaged with? And perhaps harder to reach voices? And a follow up to that is, how are you going to close the feedback loop? So that you can not only engage them and take their opinions, but how do you involve them moving forwards perhaps? Or demonstrate that their voices have meant something in your strategy and your plan?
Thank you, Sean. I think I can have a stab at that, the first part of the question. We're going to continue to engage with people. We noted, clearly noted the areas where people we've not contacted, people, for example, in social and rented homes. Those are areas that we need to be knocking on doors, talking with. So that's something that the Central Lack is going to be doing over over the next few years. But we're going to continue with that. But Adele, the other question about how we monitor what's coming, gone through and the feedback?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Sean, for your questions. I think in terms of actually monitoring success, it's about making sure that we speak to people like yourself and look at how we can actually go out there and to speak to different people in different manners and different methods. Whether that is through the way that Bernard mentioned about old fashioned door knocking or actually rocket up in coffee shops and local supermarkets. In terms of the success, that is something that I think it's not just for one individual, it's about collective success. We're just one one area in terms of what we pick up, but it's about bringing people around the table and actually doing things such as walkabouts, making sure that what is being raised is explored. But what I'm willing to do, Sean, is after this session, I will send you and drop you an email. And we can look at what sort of things that you would like us to do to make sure that we can look into them further. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm very aware as Chair of the Lack that we've only reached one percent of the residents in this area, which is, you know, is by far not good enough. But there, you know, but we've started from a very low point. So we're going to continue to do this. This is our job. So next question from Lucia.
I'm mute myself.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm a resident of in Brum Hall, suppose, near the Botanical Gardens and Ecclesall Road. My question is to do with air pollution and to do, I'd like to find out what information there is on the central areas regards air pollution. And I know that Sheffield has been, has been in, you know, let me see, I wrote it down, Sheffield has been in breach of the legal limits for nitrogen dioxide for a number of years now. And I was, a lot of that is due to transport. And I wanted, you know, in the sense of the transport and some of the consultation that the council has recently undertaken, whether air pollution is something that the central area is going to look at, you know, in for our area.
Yeah, thank you. Well, we can certainly liaise with, with our cabinet member for transport who's taking air pollution very seriously in the city centre. It's a very big struggle. Perhaps Douglas, you could just pop in there.
Yeah, just a brief word. I mean, yes, it's really important because actually Ecclesall Road in particular is one of those areas that you can just tell is, is, you know, quite heavily polluted, very largely from traffic. There's a huge amount of traffic there, has been for a long while. In terms of monitoring, there is actually quite a lot of monitoring. There is, he's publicly available. And there is something on the council's website, although it might link to the DEFRA website. And I've never been entirely clear how well that's presented. I mean, I don't think it is particularly well presented. But the data is there for people who are really interested, while the challenge is getting out to the public, but also in a way that makes sense to people. Having said that, it's not no surprise that, yeah, there is air pollution there. Big thing coming up soon is the move towards the Clean Air Zone. So this has been knocking about for a number of years. Hopefully coming forward fairly soon. And the big thing is not so much about charging vehicles, which will come in later this year, it'll be in well, but about, you know, a pretty substantial amount of grants we've got out to central government to upgrade the vehicle fleet on buses, taxis, and to some extent, some commercial vans, which cause, you know, a lot of the worst pollution there. Although the Clean Air Zone itself is centred around the inner ring roads. The idea about that is it's chosen because it captures pretty well all traffic going across the city. So something going down Ecclesall Road is going to run up against the inner ring road. And so you can't really avoid that. So hopefully that will have a transformative effect over time. And we'll have to see how things change even over this calendar year. As, you know, we get those grants out to those small businesses locally.
Thank you, Douglas. So next question is from Adam Butcher. Adam, you're on, you're on mute. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Chair. My question is again on equality. How can we make sure the quality of the documentation is in certain formats due to the under people with disabilities, so I can understand it? And how can you make, how can you also link some to one of them, the Southern Herd? I can make sure the Southern Herd community, like people with disability slash learning and autism, actually understand what's going on with their lack. So there's a lot of changes. How can we make sure them lot are actually captured?
Yeah, thank you very much. I know our first meeting, we had somebody, you, a couple of people who did British Sign Language. We'd not been able to fit that into this, this session, but we've got, we've got to innovate. If you say, you know, we are a city committed to equality, can I just hand over to Adele as well? And maybe to answer me more detail.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Adam, for your question. If I recollect, we spoke at the first public meeting, which were held at the Burton Street Foundation. I think one of the key priorities for me as part of our engagement was to make sure that we use organisations and community groups like the Burton Street Foundation and other groups across the lack to ensure that where mainstream services may struggle to reach out to certain groups, we have the facility to work alongside people who can do. In terms of the question around the accessibility, that is something that we have made clear in terms of booking on to this, if there were anything around reasonable adjustments as in regards to the equality side. And that is something that we are continuously trying to improve and to make sure that we have different methods of communication. But again, just to point out, I'm happy to have a separate conversation offline with you to look at what sort of ideas and suggestions you can put forward. I will share my email with you after this meeting and we can look at that. And it's definitely something where we will make the local people, especially people with that disability is part of the solutions to make sure they get the message.
Thank you, Adele, and thank you for the question, Adam. Diane, you're next.
Thank you very much, Chair, from Walkley. It's kind of touched on earlier and I might have misunderstood this, but is, what is the way of getting all the information that's been received tonight out to us? Are we getting something? I know it's going to be, it's being recorded. But I'm just thinking of people or other groups who might not be able to have that accessibility to do that. From listening to what the feedbacks were, it was really interesting. And I was wondering whether we could get some kind of confirmation of all the things that's been said, please?
Okay, thank you. Adele?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Diane, for your question. In regards to the discussions that have taken place, they have been recorded. In terms of this main session, that will be put out on the public library. I were hoping that we could remove the technical glitches, but unfortunately, it will be a full recording. In terms of the discussions of the breakouts, we will be publicised the full transcripts and the discussion notes. There were scribers and note takers in each group. Once we've got that information, that will be in the public domain, hopefully in the coming days. But separately, Diane, what we will do is each individual who has been to today's session and booked on, we will be providing them with an update in the coming days following today's sessions.
Thank you, Adele. I'm also very aware that there's lots of people who aren't able to get online, get to a meeting like this. So, you know, we do exclude lots of people and it's a perpetual problem that we've got. Until we've got more equality in our, in our society, we've just got to keep, keep working on this. So any innovation, we will try and use it. Thank you. Caroline? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I had to unmute myself. It's always difficult. My question is kind of, it comes together as a response of listening to this feedback. And it seems very clear that the issue, particularly of public transport, has many, many effects to people's lives, whether it's about air quality, whether it's about road safety, whether it's about access to services, work or entertainment and all the rest of it. And as it came up, I mean, there's obviously a lot of issues about who runs it, who pays for it and the rest of it. But partly it's about the idea of it being used. And there's always been this old saturate model of the past that nobody uses public transport is beneath a real person to use it. And if we're going to do anything about car use, we have to address that issue very seriously and start changing the ethos. So that running a car is seen as a second rate activity rather than the first rate activity. And to do that, we need to have, I would argue, a number of campaigns going to change people's attitudes. But the first one would be if everyone here would make a commitment to use the buses. And if we all started to make at least one journey a week or one journey that you go by public transport, it would start to build that momentum again. And when kind of real people, like people who work for the council or councillors are seen using buses, it changes the way people feel. And I think the other question is, what can we do? One of the things we can do is to all start using public transport and leaving our cars behind as often as possible.
Thank you, Caroline. Yes, totally on board with you there. The culture is such that we're such a, such a car dependent, or so many of us are car dependent. It would take a lot of time to change that culture.
It takes a lot of time, but it's surprising how quickly people can change their minds when they need to.
I agree. And we've got the zero carbon by twenty thirty, only a few years away. So that's, that's got to be grass. We've got to keep going on that, even though it's sometimes pushing that forward is very, is very lumpy, as it were. Thank you. Were there any other questions? I can't see any other hands up. Oh, Richard, Richard Axelby.
Oh, I don't live in, in central lack, but I've been going to all the lack meetings, partly because I study political engagement and communication. So it's been really interesting for me. And I do have a point to ask about before I do so, just to say what a fantastic job Adele did and his team, Ella and Nazir, to actually go out and engage and so thoughtfully as well and put so much effort into it. Because I know they went above and beyond. So I just wanted to, to note that. What I did want to ask, and it hasn't really been mentioned in any lack meetings I've been to, is the the lack management plan or the community management plan, which are being finalised in March. I think there was a pot of about a hundred thousand pounds allocated for that, the financial year, twenty twenty one, twenty two. I'm assuming that carries over now, does it, into the next financial year? Is that right? It hasn't been announced, but I'm guessing that's what's happening.
Adele, the hundred thousand pounds, part in a push through to next year? Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Richard, for your feedback and good to see you looking well. In regards to the hundred thousand pounds, that is still intact. We've not actually set out the priorities. And the community plan is not ready. So in the next meeting, the community plan will be shared. And the hundred K at this moment in time will be carried forward, yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm just going to sum up now and like everything, thank everyone for contributing. It's been most interesting, very interesting and great to see so much innovation, ideas being put forward in the breakout groups. So the next step is for us to collate together all the feedback we've received and put these in the final version of the final version of the community plan. It's then intended that the plan is presented for approval by elected members to a formal meeting of the local area committee to be held in March this year. Obviously, this will need to be Covid compliant, but we hope by then the situation is improved enough for us to have a full in-person meeting. We will notify you of the date and time of the next meeting in March as soon as we have made those arrangements. So thank you very much for everyone turning up. It's been a big turnout. I know some other areas in the, in the city, if not other lack areas. The turnout has been disappointing, but this is not disappointing at all. It's great to hear so many people. And let's have more people from other minorities in the, in the city, other people from other parts of the, of our, of our communities engage with this. We've got to make it easy for, to talk with each other, put together a plan that is fit for the 21st century. Thank you very much.